Nice to meet you, Dr. Blaschke.
Thank you.
I saw you walking by and I was trying to get your attention.
It says assessor to me.
Not according to.
That was disturbing, Dan.
I've heard those develop very well, so you have 20.
Did they? Or are you being facetious?
No, we're being facetious. When they have to call in the police.
Oh, I see it.
There were some angry people, so.
What do I change?
Well, everything went up for the most.
Check your cell phones. That's how we vote. Check your cell phones.
The last we built.
Good evening and welcome to this special Merrimack School Board meeting tonight, June 30th, 2016. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And tonight we'll be interviewing candidates for our school board vacancy and we are scheduled to start tonight first with Bill Boyd. Alphabetical. And so, Bill, if you'd like to come to the table.
Thank you.
And as we're going through that, I'll just let you know that for the interview process, what we'll do is we'll allow you to introduce yourselves and give an overview of your background. We'll each be asking you questions, taking a turn and then passing to the left. And we'll keep going around the table until there are no further questions. When we complete our questions, we'll allow the candidate to ask questions of the board administration about the role that they may have based on our discussions. And then we'll allow the candidate time to add any information that he or she wishes regarding the interest of the position and why he or she would be the best candidate for it. This is being taped and will be replayed on Merrimack TV. And so, we will start by welcoming you, Bill, and if you'd like to talk a little bit about yourself.
Thank you. I appreciate it, Madam Chair, and through you, to the board members. I am Bill Boyd. I live on Joparoe with my wife, Michelle, and my daughter Jade. She'll be a ninth grader at the Merrimack High School this upcoming fall. Currently employed as a Provider Relations Representative with New Hampshire Healthy Families. I've been coming up on my third year now this November. Graduate of Boston College. And as all of you know, I'm currently serving my second term on the town council. Prior to that, I served one term on the School Budget Committee, four years on the Planning Board, which oversaw the CIP process, and then three years as a member of the EdCAC, where I served two years as chair. Currently in my role on the Town Council, I'm the alternate number to the Planning Board, and I also am the liaison to the EdCAC. I've given you my letter and my resume, so I'm not going to be redundant, but the reason why I choose to seek the seat is strictly to be a part of the school board team, to be a steward, to be a caretaker for the upcoming year. The appointment process, as you know, goes to April, and it's my goal to work with the school. It would be my goal to work with the school board to preserve the continuity of the budget that just got enacted this year, and then working off of that particular budget for what specific policy and policy goals the board is seeking to enact for the following year. So, I would like to be a part of that particular process so that we can continue to maintain providing the children of Merrimack access to a top-quality, top-notch education. I seek the seat because education is of interest to me, obviously, not just because I have a ninth grader in the system, but also because it is important that kids today have access to the tools so that they are able to compete once they graduate from Merrimack High School. There's a lot of kids that will go on from Merrimack High School, they might not necessarily go to college, or to tech school, or to community college. So, it's really important that the competencies that children gain at the high school level when they graduate, when they walk the stage and receive their diploma, that, you know, as I like to say, the Merrimack High School diploma has gravitas when they go out into the working world. And hopefully, that gravitas is going to allow them to be able to choose whatever they choose to see fit, whether it be, you know, like I said, going on to higher education, or to do whatever pursuits they want to do. And as the Chair indicated, there's going to be a heavy emphasis on the budget this year. And having a year serving on the School Budget Committee and five years working on the municipal side of the budget, I like to pride myself on the fact that I've worked within a team setting on budgetary issues that have impacted the town of Merrimack. So, I'm very intimately familiar in that particular regard. So, that's my opening statement, and I thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to all of you.
Thank you, Bill. And so, we'll start with Michael Thompson. Do you have a question for Bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bill, first, I'd like to thank you for all your service to the community over the past years and obviously your continued service to the community. I'd like to understand, obviously, since you are on the Town Council, the Town Council does take up some time, and obviously, the school board would too. How do you think that the impact of serving on two boards would affect your ability to serve to your potential?
No impact, no impact at all. The meeting times are different, and I've talked with my wife and daughter about this. It's not going to pose a dramatic lifestyle change to what we've got going on in my family. And I certainly would not have offered up my name for the board's consideration if I did not feel I had the necessary time to dedicate to delving into policy issues, budget issues, and whatever other things that may cross the plate of the school board. Obviously, PFLA is being very intimate to all of us here in town and impacting not just the school district, but also the community at large. So, I have the time. Thank you. Thank you.
Cindy?
Yes, could you please explain what are the most important issues to you that we're facing in education, or education in Merrimack specifically?
Well, to me, the most important issue is ensuring that people understand why your budget is $71 million. And I think it's important to communicate to people that it's not just salaries, it's physical plant, it's infrastructure, it's technology, and making sure, I mean, we are no longer in a, respectfully, we're really not that much far removed from not being in a textbook society. I mean, Kindles are becoming the norm, iPads are becoming the norm. So, I think it's important that people understand that in order to provide access to a top-notch quality education, that it does come at a cost. So, to me, the most important priority is making sure that the budget is sound, that it addresses the needs and the concerns of the school district, but at the same time that the community and the taxpayers are educated in a way that they understand exactly where their tax dollars is going to. And I think sometimes that message can get lost in translation. And, you know, we saw in the most current vote where, you know, the default budget won as opposed to what was offered by the school board at that particular time. I think, you know, people lost sight of the fact of the, for me specifically, the physical plant and the infrastructure that was included in that budget, the HVAC, the roof, the track. And, you know, some of those things were brought back on when you delved into the default side of the budget and made your particular choice. But the HVAC, which to me, I think is a critical item, was a cut that you chose to make. And that's a difficult choice that of any board member, even in a council, you have difficult choices to make. But I think it's important to illustrate those particular facts to the people in the community so that they understand when you present a budget, the budget is complete, the budget adequately and accurately reflects the needs and the goals of what the district is seeking to accomplish, both from an educational perspective, from a teacher perspective, and from an infrastructure perspective. So, that's my, that would be my primary goal in education.
Andy?
So, I want to chime in too, and thank you for putting your name out here for the board, because I know that, you know, having served with you on the Budget Committee before, you really care about this town a lot. So, it means a lot that you want to get involved with this, with the education side of things. I want to follow a little bit on Michael's comment. He asked you about the time involved with both boards. I want to get your insight a little bit on how you would handle topics that come in front of both boards where the decision of one board could influence the other. And for example, let's talk about the polling place that we just went through.
I agree.
Where the, you know, the Town Council requested schools, you know, the district to offer up schools to help. We chose to vote, and we voted essentially what the Town Council wanted. We were able to do it, but there could be times where we don't, as a board, the majority have a differing view than the Town Council. How do you see your role in both places at the same time handling that sort of a conflict?
That conflict only would come into effect if I choose to put my name on the ballot next April. I don't see there being any conflicts for the upcoming nine to 10 months, to be perfectly candid with you. So, I don't foresee that being a problem. However, to address the question directly, the area presents a unique opportunity for me in serving both on the Town Council and on the school board, if appointed, to liaison between both boards. And I think that has never been brought to this community's attention, as it has over the last couple of years, where there has been challenges between both legislative bodies in trying to find common ground on issues that the school board wants to cooperate with the Town Council. The Town Council has desires and wants to cooperate with the school board, but, you know, it's kind of like a jigsaw puzzle. You keep trying to, you know, jam a square peg into a round hole, and it doesn't seem to fit every time, you know, that both boards try to connect. So, I think while there's opportunities for staff to communicate with each other, I also think it would present, over the next nine to 10 months, a very unique opportunity to see how relationships might improve if a member of the Town Council were sitting on the school board and be given the opportunity to liaison between both legislative bodies. That being said, it's a very fair question. I think when it comes to polling places, I would have one vote out of five. On the Town Council, I have one vote out of seven. And whatever the majority votes for is whatever the majority votes for. And I would abide by that particular rule, well, I would abide by that particular vote as a matter of policy. And to be candid with you, I've, on the Town Council, I've been the sole minority vote on several different occasions. And ultimately, I've ended up supporting the ultimate goal, because even though I may have been on the minority side of a particular vote, it doesn't diminish what the end goal is for the council. And I've always supported whatever the direction the council has chosen as it relates to policy in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. And I've been the sole vote as well, and I know how it feels. My question for you is, and I took it from your application talking about how you work with speech-language pathologists, occupational physical therapists, and then a lot in the disadvantaged youth areas.
Correct.
And so, what skills from your professional life overall, not just your current role, do you feel would bring value to your role on the school board?
So, my professional role, and I did highlight, and thank you, I appreciate that. I did highlight that because having been a Provider Relations Representative, working on the functional therapy side of the ledger, you know, I work with physical therapists that do treat Medicaid patients of the adult population. But, you know, there's also a good majority of my book of business, speech-language pathologists and occupational therapists, that do work with KIDIBECA kids and other disadvantaged and challenged youth with some of their special needs, whether it be autism, developmental delays, Asperger's, cerebral palsy, I mean, I can run the gambit. It's been very eye-opening to see the work, the passion, and the commitment that these functional therapists literally throw into their kids. And to be honest with you, they are their kids. I see my role in trying to make sure that their focus is on patient care, and then they're not perseverating over why my claim didn't get paid, or why this prior authorization wasn't approved. You know, it's my goal to make their interaction with my company, New Hampshire Healthy Families, be as seamless as possible so that they don't have to worry about the mundane aspects of medicine, which is HIC for 1,500s and UV4s and continuity of care and doctor scripts and that kind of thing, you know, so that they can actually focus and target, you know, when their patient comes in for their 45-minute session, whether it's working with dysphagia or artic issues, or feeding and swallowing issues, that they're able to dedicate their time on that particular patient, not have to worry that something's going, I can't really treat this patient because, you know, my company hasn't paid their claims, because it always seems to loom in their background. And it's the, you know, one piece of feedback that I do get from my providers, is that they're, if a claim doesn't get paid and there's a pattern, and I'm not saying that it happens often, but if there's a pattern, claims not getting paid, they're very reticent to treat that particular member, because they're very afraid of not getting compensated for what they were contracted to do. And I don't blame them. So, that's my goal, is to make sure that they're completely engaged on treating their patients. That's my primary goal. When I get a phone call from them and they have a problem with their claim, if they have a problem with their contracting, or they have problems with their authorizations, it's my job to fix the problem so that they can treat the patient that we've asked them to do. So, that's how I, you know, those skill sets, I look at the ability to problem-solve, bringing those problem-solving skills, and having the level of understanding and compassion as it relates to that particular segment of our population, which is a very sensitive and, and I hate to use the term disadvantaged, but, you know, a very disadvantaged side of our population. You know, we have, unfortunately and regretfully, we have that section, that segment of our population in the Merrimack school system. And, you know, those folks, that's why they pay their taxes, they're entitled to those particular level services. So, as a board member, really crucial to make sure that we're continuing to maintain, you know, the level of care and the continuity of care and the level of services, that they need remain uninterrupted. Thank you for the question.
Michael?
Thank you. So, another question I have, I was trying to understand, you know, if you have any ideas or views that you think you might be able to review or want to review deeper within the school district. And I'll give you an example of some of the ones that I'm looking at, just to get a better understanding for myself, and see if there's ways to benefit, such as possibly solar additional communications with the community, the VOTAC, and obviously, the water issue. Just wondering if you had any additional thoughts on things that you'd like to dive into a little bit deeper.
As it relates, can you just amplify? I understand what you're saying, Michael. Can you just amplify that a little bit so that I can understand?
So, like with the solar piece, I think that there's possibly cost savings to the school district.
I agree.
I'm reviewing it with this administration to see if it's viable as a first step, trying to review it and get a better understanding.
Okay. Now, I understand. So, if you were to look at, if we were to take a look at water, okay, let's just focus on water, because we just had the meeting last night, and you and I were there, Michael, for a very long time. It's going to, Merrimack Village District right now is saying two months to design the system and 18 months to implement. That's 20 months. So, now, the question then becomes, what's the policy of the school district going to be as it relates to providing clean drinking water to the kids and the teachers and the administration in each school building? Are we going to financially make a commitment to installing filters into our school buildings? If so, what's the cost? If so, how do we go about it? Are we doing it at the water fountain, or are we going to do it at a point of entry? So, that was the first thing in coming here tonight that I thought about, because if it's going to take 20 months for the MVD, let alone how long, and, you know, like I said last night, let alone how long it takes for San Gobain and Department Environmental Services and MVD to hash out an agreement, because that could take months in time. The school district really should have some type of a plan in place as to how we're going to be able to provide a temporary fix, or maybe a permanent fix, to all of our school buildings as it relates to potable drinking water. And that's, you know, I know that reverse osmosis is probably the most expensive thing in the industry today to treat. The cheap thing going right now is the activated charcoal filtration system. That seems to be the rule of thumb. Then, people that I've talked with in the community, that's what they're using, but it's, you know, it's coming at a significant cost. So, that would be, to me, in the short term, because this is, I'm looking at a position of nine to 10 months in the short term, that would be one particular policy piece that I certainly would be engaged on with the school district, should I be appointed to the school board. The vocational tech piece, again, from a short-term perspective, I think it would be very difficult to have any type, for me to have any type of substantive engagement unless the school district was nearing the end of completing its policy and coming up with a new directive or a new direction as to how they want to handle vocational technical, whether it's going to be, you know, as I allude to, you know, obviously, it's competence-based learning, but is it going to be strictly, you know, contained within the schools? Is there going to be a cooperative education component where they go out into the community and do some type of service with the local business in town, or with the local business in area? I mean, that would be an interesting conversation to have. For me, bringing something new to the table as it relates for the next nine to 10 months, I know that there is a desire to build a new superintendent's office. And I know that the Planning and Building Committee has done yeoman's work on looking at a needs assessment, or has looked at needs assessment as it relates to our physical plant infrastructure throughout the town of Merrimack. So, I think one of the things that I really would like to look at, that if there is going to be a conversation, and I think it needed a conversation, about looking at building a new SAU building for the superintendent and her team, that at the same time, we look back historically and look at some of the other building needs and see if there is any opportunities to maybe include physical plant improvements with the contemplation of trying to build the new superintendent's office, whether or not there's the ability to piggyback off of one another, or, you know, looking at cost savings as it relates to, for materials or the, you know, depending on who the contractor is, is it possible that the, you know, the contractor's going to bid on the additional projects so that both projects are done simultaneously so that it allows the school district to be better prepared of its budget? So, that would probably be, at least would be one thing I would be bringing to the table, looking to at least have a conversation with over the next six to nine months, if appointed to the school board. Thank you.
Cindy?
I was curious, what committees or what assignments do you have for Town Council, like subcommittees and?
EdCAC meets once every quarter. The National Planning Committee meets once every quarter. And the Planning Board meets every other Monday, but I'm an alternate, and I only go when Tom Koenig is sick. And Tom Koenig is really good about going to the Planning Board. So, I'm engaged on those two particular committees or commissions, for the lack of a better word. But I specifically chose those committees because I felt that the level of work that it entailed is far more, what I would call, macro, more big picture, big picture kind of thinking, as opposed to nitty-gritty, nuts and bolts, policy-wankish kind of stuff that you tend to deal with on the Planning Board, or the Conservation Commission, or even the Heritage Commission for that matter.
Andy?
So, earlier, when you first did your intro, you talked about wanting to really focus on budgetary items, because you felt that was the main. So, having been on the School Budget Committee for a year, you're familiar with the way that the budget's segmented. I'm sure you've been, you know, paid attention.
The process was really enlightening, Andy. I really, not to interrupt your comment, but I think that year was very eye-opening in terms of what the teachers bring to the table, what the administrators bring to the table, in terms of what their needs and wants are to allow the school board being able to make an informed choice as to what is an appropriate budget, and then in turn, handing over to the School Budget Committee, which really, for all intents and purposes, we're just the second, we're really just the second set of eyes on the budget.
And I've often said that almost every voter should spend a term on the Budget Committee. If nothing else, they learn about that.
I agree.
But the question I have is, is that, given that knowledge, and what you've seen in front of us with the default budget, and as we plan for the budget for the next fiscal year, are there any areas that you have any particular interest in looking deeper in? Or, having said that, excuse me, if there isn't a particular area, are the particular areas that you want to focus on to make sure that people understand why it is we spend what we spend? Because you know that there's not a silver bullet from, you know, where you can save a million dollars here or there necessarily.
I think the high schools move to a comprehensive level, I think is brand-new. Well, it is brand-new, but I think it creates a little bit of trepidation with parents whose children are going to high school. Whereas before, you had a four-level approach, or a four-pronged approach to identifying each child's appropriate learning level, you've now reduced it down to three. So, you've got your, what I would term, your standard level, and then you've got your honors level, and then you've taken your two middle levels, and you've kind of lumped them, for the lack of a better term, you've lumped them into what they call comprehensive. And frankly, I'm enthralled with the approach. And I'd like to see it unfold over the next six to nine months, because there's, I know that there are going to be bumps in the road. And I'm going to be very curious to hear, if I'm sitting on the school board, I'm going to be very curious to hear from department heads, you know, what are the successes, what are the challenges that they're facing as it relates to the placement of children at the comprehensive level? There was a kerfuffle over the honors piece, and how, you know, 105 kids applied for honors and only 45 were selected, and the other 60 were, had applied. And quite honestly, we're very smart kids, not going to diminish that, we're very smart kids, but, you know, administration had to make a decision, who are they going to put into that honors level course? That the commingling of the English and the history into like an American Studies or like an American Classics. I was absolutely fascinated with the honors level. I think it's great for the kids that got nominated into the honors program. I think it's going to be really exciting for them. But I also, the question then becomes, is with the 60 other students, are they going to be adequately challenged at the comprehensive level? Are we going to be meeting their individual educational needs? Because historically, at the seventh and the eighth grade, they may have tested and they may have placed at a very high level, and now they're being relegated into the comprehensive level because they couldn't place into the honors level. And I think that's going to be an interesting challenge for the high school administration and for the school board, as to how they're going to navigate that, how they're going to navigate that path to make sure, not just those 60 kids, but how, those kids that are in the comprehensive level, how are we managing and how are we encouraging and challenging them so that we're meeting their individual educational needs? Because, you know, as you all know, each child is different. You know, each child learns at a different level, at a different pace. And I think it's critical, because, you know, it's uncharted waters, it's, you know, it's, you know, we're boldly going where no education has gone before, kind of, you know, well, at least not here. You know, it may have been done successfully. So, I think it'd be, the challenge would be looking at what the issues are, maybe getting anecdotal information from comparable SAUs that have made that migration over, doing side-by-side comparisons, you know, is there, you know, is there opportunity to make improvements? Can we initiate the improvement right there on the spot, or is it something that has to be done from a policy perspective incrementally? So, for me, that is, that intrigued me, that when I brought Jade to the open house and listening to Principal Johnson talk about that, I thought that was fascinating, I thought that was intriguing. And I certainly would love to be a part of that, if I was on the school board, I'd love to be a part of that conversation.
Yes, absolutely.
So, I start off by asking it as a budget question.
Okay.
And you went into sort of the policy.
I apologize.
No, 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 that's okay. How do you see that relating to budget? Because I think any of, all of us that were on the board that were part of the budget discussion saw this change and struggled a little bit individually. How can we, with our staffing level and our budget level, be able to handle what you just described?
It comes down to, what is the philosophy of the school board? What are the choices of the school board? You either go through the full year, and mind you, you know, come December and January, you're going, you're literally are not going to be in a position to make a decision, because it's a pilot program that's just getting off. And it's, you know, it would be like, you know, shooting fish in a barrel if you decided to pull the plug out on a program that you haven't really, you know, given the administration its due, and allow that process to be fully vetted out. So, the question would be, working with the administration, you know, you're four months in, you're five months into this process. What are the budgetary needs that we need to be providing you so that a year from now, we're going to have a good idea as to what the first year was? the, what the first year was as it relates to the, the comprehensive level at Merrimack High School? You know, what do we need to consider after one year from a budgetary perspective? You know, are we just going to, you know, dive in with both feet and not check the temperature and just, for the lack of a better word, dump, you know, dump capital at it? Or are you going to use, you know, be data driven, use that year and begin to formulate your 17, 18 budget based off of the appropriation that's going to be coming up in this year's budget? So you, for me, as, as a board member, I, I certainly am not going to be hasty to say we're done with it because it's putting the cart before the horse. You have to allow at least that cycle from September through June. You need that to go through. You need to have the high school administration come back in July or August and debrief the school board and say, this is what worked, this is what didn't work, this is, this is what we anticipate implementing, this is what it's going to cost to implement. If you choose not to implement, but you want to still keep it as a pilot program, this is, this is a bottom line figure that we need to keep, to keep it operating as a pilot program until we're able to acquire more data so that the board can make a, a more informed decision as to how it wants to use taxpayer dollars on the comprehensive level program for the high school.
And actually, because we're getting a lot of questions, you're getting a lot of questions that I had, so I did have one more question, and I think I might be done. And that is, describe your definition of what a public quality education looks like.
Define?
What a, what a quality public education looks like to you.
Oh, it's easy. I'm serious, it's easy. Merrimack's ranked the 23rd best community in the United States, we're the 16th safest, we just got rid of the 7th safest community for children in the United States. And that is, that's a community effort. And it's, it's systemic for the type of people that come to our community. And because of the type of community that we're, type of people we're attracting to the community, it's obvious that they're attracted to the teachers, the schools, and the level of education that's being provided, that's being provided here in Merrimack. So my definition isn't, isn't necessarily a verbal definition, I could, I could give you a verbal definition. But my definition of what a top notch quality education is, is by virtue of the fact that people are choosing to live, work, and raise and educate their kids here in Merrimack because of the services that we provide, plain and simple.
Thank you. Do any of the board members have questions? We'll go around again. Michael?
Thank you. I was wondering if you could, if you saw any miscues from the board that you might think could have been changed last year? I'll take one off the table in regards to the possibility of the track and the heating unit being as a separate item. I was wondering if there's anything else that you saw that you would have done differently?
The, the board made a, so, so there's, there's two ways to approach that, Michael. The roof and HVAC is a necessity and a needed item for physical plant. Those I would have put into your budget. Absolutely, I would have put that in the budget. I think the track should have been a Warren article and put to the voters.
Just to clarify, clarify my question.
Sure.
I wanted those off the, off the table.
Oh, you want those off the table.
And something else.
You want those off the table.
No answer is a good one too, so it's not, it's not like.
So, okay, I, I apologize. Could you just repeat your question?
Just think, I'm, I'm just seeing if in, in the last year, if stuff that you've heard from the community or looked from the board, if there's something that you may have done differently as a board member or addressed differently than the people that were there outside of the items that I stated.
No. No, I don't, I don't think I would have done, you know, if I was a board member, I don't think I would have done anything differently. I think I would have probably been, I probably would have been a minority vote on some of those issues. You know, I probably would have been a minority vote. I think ultimately I would have supported the budget. I went and voted for the budget because of, of the, of the capital improvements that were needed. But as far as, as far as missteps going, you know, looking back through, looking back through things, you know, over the back last, you know, five years, I, I think, to be, to be candid with you, I think no. I think, I think one of the things that this board does, and I think you do it appropriately, and I think you do it reasonably, is that when, when people go to Twitter, let me back step, if people go to social media and vent, I think, and I know you have, and any, I know you have, that you've said, if you've got a complaint, here's my phone number. If you've got a complaint with anything, you need to call, you need to call the principals. You need to, can't just, you know, go onto social media and, and, and blast away because, because you, you were aggrieved. I think the, the appropriate process is, is to engage, you know, follow your, follow your chain of command, engage the teacher, then the principal, then, you know, you know, work, work your way up. I think, I think what you two have done offline, I think is, I think has been appropriate. But, but that being said, I don't think I would have, I don't think I would have done anything differently. I think, I think what I would have done, what I might have done is look at the fact that over the last, last 10 years, you know, Merrimack's population number has dropped by about 1,000. And I think I would have looked at opportunities where, is there opportunities to, to redistrict? That's probably, probably the only thing I could see an opportunity that the school board could be, could be doing is, again, going back to what I talked about previously with, with the planning and building committee, looking at, at building needs, looking at building assessments and including the population trends and figuring out is there, is there a way to adequately redistrict, re-story, master call, importance vary in such a way so that we're, you know, we're, we're getting the most, most use out of, out of our building needs? I mean, that's, that's probably the one, one piece that I, if I could go back, that's probably one thing that I would want to look at.
Thank you.
Cindy, do you have another question?
Is there anything else that we haven't discussed today? Any other initiatives that you would like to see addressed by the board within the next several months?
I'd, I'd like to see, and I hope I can be a part of this. I really felt very happy with how we handled our poll, poll places. I, I really do. And I did like how the school board deliberated on the information that the town council provided to the school board regarding our specific wants. I will be the first one to tell you that I'm surprised that none of you picked up the phone and called me or any of my colleagues with any questions because there was, there was a lot, there was a lot of information there that I think having an expert conversation one on one to amplify and clarify concerns, I think would have added, added value to your understanding and would have in turn, I think, would have given you better understanding of the needs and be able to help out staff in terms of what, what they need to do. At the end of the day, I absolutely was thrilled with the end result, was absolutely thrilled with the collaboration that occurred, the cross jurisdictional collaboration that occurred between police, fire, town clerk's office, moderator, and, and the town council, and obviously the, the school district. I couldn't be more thrilled that we were able to, instead of fixing a blame, fixing a problem. So that was one thing. So I, I'd like to build on that. I'd like to, I'd like to build, that would be the, in the next six to nine months, I'd like to build on that. The second one that I would like to, to focus on is to ensure that the school board continues to use all means possible to communicate to people across, across all spectrums. You have, you have your parents and, you know, you use your, you know, reverse 411, which is, which is a great tool. But I also think there's opportunities to, to outreach to different segments of the community. I'm thrilled that the superintendent's a part of Rotary. I think that's, that's great outreach. I think that's a great way of incorporating schools' interests with business interests in the community. I think there can be more, more opportunities in that area, whereas the school board can be outreach into the community to communicate specific desires and specific needs. And I know you do that, but there's all, to me, there's always, there's always room for improvement in that particular regard. And the third piece is to, looking back at the, the grant, the Raytheon Grant regarding energy efficiency, which I, I, the changing of the lighting. Honeywell, I apologize, Honeywell, thank you. Sorry.
I was there.
I know you were there. I know you were, I know you were. I'd, I'd love for the district to continue to look for public-private opportunities, like as Mike alluded to, as it related to, to solar opportunities. Obviously, we have a PFOA problem. You know, looking, you know, looking for public-private opportunities where some type of sponsorship of a particular issue can be brought into the school and maybe, you know, through, through a grant process or through some type of a subsidy can be worked out so that we're involving a local business with, with quality life or with educational stuff. And I don't mean to single out the solar, the water piece of the, but, you know, like, you know, we talked about, you know, information technology, Kindle, the iPad. I think there's great opportunities to, to, to look for public-private, you know, private opportunities to see where we can partner with, with businesses in the community. So that, that'd be the three things I really would, would like to, to look at.
Shannon, may I just summarize for a second?
Absolutely.
So if I understand correctly, it's polling success? Is that how you would describe the first round?
So it would, it would be kumbaya. Well, you know, cooperation between both jurisdictions.
For a successful election experience?
For a successful election experience, but also this, you know, I mean, let's be honest, you know, the, we've got the, the old tennis courts and the skateboard park that's going to loom on the horizon and that's going to require cross jurisdictional cooperation between both. I anticipate that it's, it's going to work out, it's going to go smoothly. I, I really do.
So it's more the cross jurisdictional cooperation?
Correct. Yeah, absolutely.
And then communication with all segments within the community?
All segments within the community. I, I think anytime you have an opportunity to improve communications is good.
And then the exploration of opportunities for public?
Public, private.
Okay.
Thank you, Cindy, for your question.
Andy?
Just one really quick one then, is you mentioned at the beginning that your goal is for the next nine to 10 months.
Correct.
To do this. If you, if you get a point, if you get a point, what are the chances are that you would extend or, or look to, to run for one, either the one or the three year at the end of this period?
I could be very political and say I don't respond to speculation. But what I will tell you, what I will tell you, Andy, I talk with my, when I'm up for, when I was up for reelection with the town council, I had a long talk with my wife in January and in February because it's really important for my, for my wife, and now it's important for my wife and my daughter to, to buy in. The probability of me running for reelection to the town council is very strong. The probability of me running to fulfill the remainder of the term, I think, is also very strong, only because of going back to the comprehensive level piece. I, I, I'm really, I'm, I'm really enthralled with that. And to me, that's, that's an 18 month, to me, that's an 18 month investment for, for me to be a part of. I'm not going to lie to you, I, you know, I'm offering myself up to serve through April. And I may just, I may just serve through April, if only because of the budget concerns or the, the fact that, you know, this, this community, this, this board needs to add another team player to, to work and develop and craft a budget for the next year. So I may take the approach that I'm, like I said at the beginning, to caretake and steward and get you into April and pass the baton off to someone else. And I haven't, in, in full candor, I haven't thought that particular, that, that, that through. I, I think it would be, I think it would be interesting to see what the voters would do to see my name running for both offices. And that's just the political scientist in me. Thank you. I think it's a fair question, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we still have questions as the board? You have one more, Michael?
I got one more. First, I didn't say in the beginning, but thank you for putting your name in for this position. Definitely know that's commitment to the community that you're looking for or continue to do. If you were not chosen tonight, you brought up the piece about being alea is on between the two boards. Is, is that something that you would continue to strive for with either multiple members on the board or an individual here?
I, I wouldn't say it if I didn't believe it, Michael.
Yeah.
Okay. And I, and I think I, in some of the things that the council has talked about in the past, I think I've alluded to in passing, the need for both legislative bodies to cooperate with each other. Okay? We can, we can always agree to disagree on certain things in, in, in a constitutional republic embracing democratic ideals. That is very true. But in the same token, we all have one goal, and that's to make Merrimack to be the best community possible, with the eighth largest community in this state. And when I ran for town council in 2011, we were at a crossroads, and we're going to continue to grow. And I think as we grow, challenges are going to increase. And I think as those challenges increase, it becomes increasingly imperative for the both boards to work with each other when we can work with each other on issues that are mutually convenient for both boards, where we can, where we can find common ground and be able to, to move our communities forward. So I, I do believe that, that I would, I most certainly would, would love to liaison between the, the school board and the town council. And like I said, I would not have said it if I did not personally believe in that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So are there any other questions of Bill? Seeing them, thank you, Bill, for coming out, putting your name in. And I know it's awkward having a job interview on camera, so, but thank you so much for taking the time and, and your candor. Well, it's next on the agenda for him, so we're not done with you. So remember, we have a process, which I outlined at the beginning of this meeting. And so we have completed our questions, and so we're, this is your time to ask us questions. So do you have questions of the board or administration? And Marcus, of course, administration?
My, my question to the board is, what were the qualities that Davis Powell brought to your team that you would want somebody like myself bringing to the table should I be appointing, should I be appointed to the board?
I'll go first since we're all.
Or let me, let me, let me retract and rephrase. What, what, what are the specific skill sets that Davis Powell brought that created efficiency that you're hoping to achieve in appointing a person to the school board? Let me rephrase it that way.
Okay. I'd still say that Davis's role with the insurance industry was very helpful to us when he was negotiating with the school districts collective bargaining units. You know, he had some insights into the, the insurance industry process, that was very helpful. I know that you have some of that as well, which is why I asked that specific question about your insurance, your background with claims and that kind of thing. Because that's something where you two do have a lot in common. I think when it comes to any other qualities, you know, we're not looking to replace Davis Powell with Davis Powell, we're looking to replace Davis Powell with someone who is willing to do whatever work needs to be done.
Yeah, I don't mean to correct the chair, I would say succeed Davis Powell, you can't replace Davis Powell.
Okay. I'm fair, I, I am fair with your correction. So for my pers, my personal perspective is, you know, I'm, we're looking for someone to step in and offer the board something that we don't have to complement us, supplement us in, in knowledge and talent. I would tell you first and foremost, I have no experience in insurance other than when I have to file a claim. So, you know, that's where Davis came in very handy for us. So that's the one quality I would say that was unique to him. Andy?
So Davis is in Florida, and if he's watching this, he can feel free to come back up. But Davis has been at one time or another on the board for quite a few years. And I'm a firm believer that you need fresh eyes on the board on occasion. It's good to cycle through, even if it's not the whole board, at least a member or two. So for me, a fresh perspective is the thing that I think. I mean, you're right, you can't replace Davis, he brought insurance knowledge in, but he's also been doing this for a while. And, and I know for me, this is my second term, sometimes I think maybe I'm going through the, the rigor or the, the motions, sometimes when maybe I should be looking at things differently. So both candidates are fresh to the school board. You, you've got more town, you know, budget experience, but, but you're fresh to the school board. And with your daughter, you're looking at probably things with a little bit different eyes than, than you had in the past, which is, which is really refreshing. So for me, it's somebody who wants to be involved that's bringing a different perspective. So.
Yeah, I would say that Davis brought the experience that he had from having been on the board, the budget committee, but as well as a parent. Like, for me, my kids are younger and in elementary school, and Davis was one of the board members who had, whose kids had gone all the way through. So that was always, his insights there were really interesting to me, especially as it relates to the high school. But I agree with what Shannon and Andy have said, that, I mean, it's, people can bloom where they're planted. You know, there's, everyone has their core strengths and the ability, I think, to want to make a difference to, I, I would say, the quality education while keeping in mind the expense to the taxpayers, that balance, and being willing to do the work and wanting to do the work. And I think everybody brings a unique skill set to the table.
And I'm going to use that a lot in the midst. Anyone can bloom where they are planted. So, that's good. I love it. Mid-bits, love.
Copyrights, Cindy Gualiovi, 2016.
Obviously, I only served with them for, I'm not sure, it was two months, I think, three months? But I know, I've known Davis for a while. I'm not sure about exact quality, but what I would say is, one of the things that I think I liked was that he respectfully disagreed with individuals and voiced his opinion and did it with respect and facts behind it. And I think that's good for any board to have a lot of, I would say, communication that leads to a discussion that maybe have both sides. And that's one of the qualities that I, I look for almost in all individuals. So, thanks.
The one question for Mr. McGlaughlin. Should he choose to entertain it? What's the top issue that the district is going to be presenting to the school board this year that has not been talked about previously? Or is there a pressing issue that hasn't been discussed before that will, at some point, be brought to the school board for deliberation? Sorry?
I don't think there's, I, I wouldn't say that there's anything that this board would be surprised about, you know, when we move into the new year. For us, it's always about trying to sustain the work we've done and to, to, you know, continue to seek ways to, you know, to, to do what we've been doing better and, and really maintain and sustain what we've done. So I don't think there's anything that the board would be surprised about. There's nothing particularly big looming that hasn't already been discussed.
Okay. Okay. And just from a, from a matrix standpoint, what are your, what are your process flows as it relates to information sharing between the administration and the school board and, and the different schools?
Is that a question for me?
Well, just, it's a general question, could be for, for the chair or it could be for you. How is, how is information shared? Beside, like, you know, like, is there, is there a chain of command? Like, you send it to Marge, Marge sends it to Shannon, Shannon disseminates it to the, to the school board? Or am I copying Shannon on an email to you about a particular question involving whatever? Just, just curious to know how, how information flows.
I think that's an appropriate question for Shannon.
Okay. I can take it. It really depends on the issue. I think there are times where administration makes a decision if there's something that is timely and critical, that we need to know very quickly, that everyone gets assigned a couple of board members at the administration level, and they call out to us, let us know what's going on when, when it's necessary. So when you talk about things of emergent nature, things that might make, say, the newspaper, the, the news where we should know it before it's, it's hitting, you know, the, the tabloids, as you would say. But on what I would call a course of business, I think it's a normal process. So, you know, if something comes to administration that they want us to know, I would rather all four, five, well, four right now, but five board members get copied, because I don't think that one, information shouldn't be siloed, should be disseminated. So I'm not one to wait for the chair to send it out. I'd rather everyone got it up front. So when it comes to that, it's all about making sure we're all on page. And so, you know, no one person is surprised, and one person doesn't know what the other does. So, you know, in that token, if you had a question of the administration, as chair, I would appreciate a copy on the email. I always
That's what I, that's what I do right now. I'm just curious to know that, you know,
I, I always did that.
That things don't change.
You know, when I was not chair, I always did that, because that way, as it's an emerging issue that might come before the board, I, maybe just a simple question that has a simple answer, but if it's a simple question that has an answer that's valuable to all, that there's the opportunity to do that. So.
Right. And I, and I agree with that, and that's, that's my best practice as a counselor.
So.
Just so you, just so that everybody knows.
Excellent.
That's all I have for questions.
So now we're up to item number four on our interview process, which is allow the candidate time to add any information that you wish regarding the position and why you may be best, you know, suited for it. You know, anything we might have missed that you wanted to share with us?
No, I just, I would, I would surmise by, again, highlighting the fact that, you know, I've, I've been through five municipal budget cycles, I've been on the school budget for, for one particular cycle. The ability to bring that particular skill set to the table, I think, and I hope, would, would be invaluable to, to the board, to the board members present tonight. I've always, as a counselor, functioned as, as a team member. That's how I, that's how I approach things. That's, that's my work style. I try to be inclusive as, as much as possible with, with questions or concerns that I have. And I'm very quick to, to share with my, very quick to share with my colleagues. So I certainly wanted to at least amplify my skill set and my operating style as a town council. And I will just surmise and say thank you very much for the time and appreciate the opportunity to interview. And I hope I've answered your questions to your satisfaction, and I certainly hope, after deliberation, during your support, to, to join you on the board. And thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Bill. And now we invite to the table Dr. Naomi Schoenfeld. Thank you for coming.
Love.
So we'll go through the same process. So first and foremost, this is a moment where you can introduce yourself, give an overview of your background, and why you may have interest in this position.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
When you started, just for the fun of it, you mentioned the question of why one would be best for a position. And I wanted to clarify that I think that there are many, many people who would be best for this position, including my esteemed person over there, who I just met today. I don't know my, my, my town council well enough. I think I bring a few unique pieces, but whether or not they're the best fit for you is really up to you to say. I am an educator. I am not a practicing teacher, but I am certified as a special educator in New Hampshire, as well as a general educator. I started in education, working with children with special ed as a teenager, when I was the teenager who would babysit for children who other people would not want to babysit for. And from there, I moved into teaching as a special educator, got my masters, taught in public schools and private schools in inclusive and self-contained settings, and then went on for my doctorate, and got my doctorate in curriculum and instruction. Since then, I've taught at Riviera University in Nashua, and that is what brought me to Merrimack. I moved here eight years ago in order to assume that position, and I've lived here, sharing a home with my mother ever since, and I hope to stay for a very long time. My research at the moment, because if one has a doctorate and they're at a university, then you tend to focus on teaching at the university level and research. And so at Riviera, I have a combination of, of roles, which includes teaching in the teacher preparation programs, which provides me with a marvelous opportunity to interact with a number of school districts in the area, to supervise and talk with student teachers and their cooperating practitioners and that type of a thing. And I also conduct research. And the areas of research that are most interesting to me at the moment have to do with inclusive education, with, there are different terms where there's RTI, there are all these pieces that get bantered about, but it has to do with, again, the concept of how one integrates a very diverse student body into receiving the best possible education they have with the resources that we have available. On top of that, I'm very interested in technology in the classroom and the ways that it can best be used and the places where it is wasted, because there are places where technology is extraordinarily helpful. And yet, certainly, there were incredible schools, teachers and students well before the iPad was invented. And so balancing those two becomes a very interesting area. I've never, I've never served on a school board. I have served on other types of boards, on foundations, and at the national level on different professional organizations, and enjoyed that very much. I'm currently the president of the Board of Trustees of a very small foundation that gives grants to teachers to help them put classroom practices that they're interested in into place. I have not been on any town councils or pieces of that kind. This would all be completely new to me. On the other hand, I'm very, very well-versed at the balancing or learning about the balance between a school district's unique needs and what the community wants and hopes that their schools will provide, and learning how to mesh those two together is something that I find both fascinating and important. I think public schools are incredibly important and that they need to continue and be supported in this country of ours indefinitely. And I've wanted very much to have an opportunity to help support them. So when this position came open, I thought it might be a chance to, to dip into the waters and, and give that a try. The likelihood is that if this had not opened, I would not ever have run for the school board, because as a citizen not involved in local politics, it's very daunting to have that first sense of, of running for a position. But given that this is open, I'm very curious to see whether it's something I will continue to pursue afterwards. And I have no idea at this point. That would depend on my experience, that would depend on your experience of me, and all kinds of things like that, that I just don't know at the moment. So my hope in being here is that I provide another opportunity, that the board be able to fill its ranks with somebody who will be helpful and allow you to continue the wonderful work that you do without interruption at the departure of your, your fellow board member.
Thank you. So we'll do the same, go door to door, as we would say. So we're going to start from the end of the table and work our way up. One question at a time with Michael.
Thank you. I'm sure. It's Schoenfeld?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Schoenfeld, thank you for coming tonight and putting yourself out there for the opportunity to be reviewed for the position on the school board. One question I had, outside of your, your family and your work, have you had any other involvement within the community of Merrimack?
Absolutely none. I've been an informed and involved citizen as much as the typical person is, but I haven't had an opportunity that really grabbed me to step in and begin to take a more public role.
Cindy?
Similar to the question I asked Mr. Boyd, I know you had mentioned technology and that's, in the, its importance. Could you tell me other initiatives or important things that you'd like to see come before the board over the next several months?
That's a two-part question. I can't say what I'd like to see come before the board, because I would need to be informed by both the district, the administration and teachers, and the board itself, what has already been done. And I think that one of the greatest mistakes that a person can do stepping into a position is bring their own agenda before they learn from those who are already there. So I certainly have the areas that are of deepest importance to me, but where those stand in relation to the current body is a little more tricky to answer. For me, the operation of a school board has to do with the balance between a community's wants, needs and resources, and the expertise of the educators providing that. And my interest would be in helping that balance to be found and utilized, so that one could get the best possible result. I can certainly, if, if there are follow-up questions that talk about my own personal perspective, I'd love to answer those. I don't mean to avoid that, but I honestly have no preconceived notions about what the board needs to do. Thank you.
Andy?
So I thought it was very interesting when you said that it was daunting to run for a, a position versus try to come in through this way, because many of us that are involved in politics now got, dipped our feet in when it switched from a selectman to a town council, and it sort of changed budget committee and things like that. So many of us that were afraid did the sort of, sort of the same thing, except there was elections. But that being said, you've heard in our other discussion that budget is a big part of what we do. And when you listen to the taxpayers, if you go onto, on, onto social media, you'll hear them talk about the tax burden is largely from the schools, 70, 71, $72 million budget. How would you go about sort of learning as you're, I mean, because you, you talked about learning while you're here. How would you go about learning about the way we do budgeting or, or being made aware of the budget? And how would you sort of approach the trade-offs and the questions that would come up? Because you talked about balancing between needs and wants and things like that.
Well, as far as learning, there's the first level, which is, of course, asking questions and learning that which you think that I need to know from the current group. But there's also past budgets, learning them, looking through them, past minutes and/or recordings of proceedings and those pieces. One of the things that I found fascinating when I became an academic, when I started teaching at the university level, was realizing that my job was actually now a professional information gatherer, that part of what I would do the rest of my life is gather information from the existing research, from comparative institutions, from other locations, and put it together to form a coherent picture of what might be the best move forward. So my first move would be to learn, and learn about past budgets a great deal. That said, I have been involved in budgets, not just at the local level. There are national organizations, Council for Exceptional Children, and its subdivision, which is a council with children with behavioral disorders, that I've served on the board for quite some time. And we, we move through a rather large budget, because it's a national organization. I have a small amount of, small, very, very small business experience of my own that I bring to that as well. There was a second half to your question.
I think it was how you would go about learning and making the trade-offs that we have to make, because, because it's all, it's all about making trade-offs when you get to the end game, so.
I think that it's important to be aware of what is important to each constituent at the table. There's very little question that people, especially today, perhaps always, but value their money and value where it will be spent, and want to see that it is spent wisely, and I think that that's fair. And that, that's going to create difficulties or challenges, points for negotiation, between the people providing the money and the people spending it. And that's simply something that will always have to be negotiated. But people have to heal, be heard on all sides, and from that, you can hear what the most important pieces are that need to be preserved in the compromises and hold on to those.
Thank you. And my question, I'm using the same ones, just called them Q1, so whoever got it, they're getting the same questions. So what skills from your professional life do you feel will bring value to your role on the school board?
I was thinking about that while I was sitting, listening to the previous interview, because, gosh, that was a wonderful lineup of skills. I'm going to highlight something a little bit different, and that is the skill as a researcher. When we're talking about the possibility of particular initiatives, if they're educational initiatives, then beyond the local view or comparative institutions, I can bring the perspective of national research or pieces of that type. If it's pieces of that kind, there is typically, the world of education has a huge diversity of opinions, and following the data is a little bit like following statistics. You can find statistics that lead in many directions, and choosing the ones that you're going to use can be a little bit tricky. So I think that bringing an understanding of data, a way of critically looking at data, and merging that with the needs of the administration and educators in particular, I think I could be a helpful voice in that regard.
And can you indulge me? Because I actually had a follow-on. I was more fair with my question to Bill, because I specifically took things out of his application that intrigued me, and I did not do that for you. And what jumped out at me in your application was teaching classes with students with EBD, which is emotional behavioral disorders. I know that's an evolving educational environment issue. So that's one thing I would like, if you wouldn't mind giving us a little background on that you do.
Absolutely. Yes. My focus in special ed is on emotional behavioral needs, and that's the area that I've done the most research publication and collaboration a bit with, within the local Merrimack School District when it comes to publication. I started out teaching in a self-contained, here's it, self-contained K to 12 classroom, so students kindergarten age through 12th grade with one room, and they all had severe emotional behavioral needs. Residential placement was their next spot after me. And I taught there for six years and learned a huge amount about how a school strives to integrate childrens who have behavioral exceptionalities and yet pushes them away at the same time for fears of its own safety and the needs of the other children, the other children in the school, and how one balances the, the rights and needs of all these diverse students at one time. As I moved past that, of course, the PBIS movement became quite strong. That's Positive Behavioral Supports and Interventions, it can be said in other orders, which brings the idea that children with behavioral needs belong and deserve to be integrated with their peers, just as any other child with a disability. Merrimack's done an incredible job in that regard and, and has some, some state and some national recognition for that. And I'd love to see that, whether it's PBIS or its successor, goodness knows that acronyms come and go, but continue to have that kind of dedication and interest in, in the students.
Excellent. And I will actually skip my next question, because it was kind of like asking two whole questions. So I will go back to Michael, and then circle back one short. So I will go back to Michael, and then circle back one short.
Thank you again.
I just don't want to be indulged.
I think it was, Cindy had brought it up, but I and I had asked Mr. Boyd in regards to views and ideas that he would come to the school board with. You said agenda. I viewed as views and ideas that you either want to better educate how the school's done or anything like that, because I know that I ran on a, on an idea of, you know, stuff that I want to review, but not necessarily an agenda, and more of an education for myself to understand whether it's something that's viable to go forward with. So are there any views or ideas that you are going to bring to the table, or want to educate yourself further regarding the school district, that you may pursue further if it's, if it's necessary, or viable, I should say?
I would like to know, I'd like to know more about which constituents, be they parents or students, outside of the school system themselves feel the least engaged, or feel that their children are, have their needs least met, and how that information can be brought forward in order to better the district and the community as a whole. I'd like to know what areas the administration and the teachers and the staff would put forward as their immediate highest concerns, the things that are preventing them from best doing their jobs, and how the community can best support that, them in doing that. And again, that pulls into that balancing act that I was talking about. From a personal perspective, clearly I have a very deep personal involvement in the idea of equitable education, inclusive education, universal design, all of those catchphrases that have to do with creating an environment where individuals thrive both emotionally and intellectually academically. And I would be curious to see where the weakest links are in that regard, and what we could do to strengthen those.
Thank you. Cindy?
Yeah, a couple of times so far, you've mentioned, you know, data, gathering data, and I can say that I believe that my colleagues here on the board, we all value data and making data-driven decisions, and I think we pride ourselves in that. But what I would like to ask is, what type of data did you gather before putting your name in the hat for this appointment?
I don't have, the resources that I had at hand are those that are available to the typical resident of Merrimack, and so I checked the website, I did a lovely little Google search, I spoke with the superintendent, she was kind enough to spend a little time talking with me about the position and what it might entail. I spoke with teachers whom I know in the district. I mostly gathered what would be called qualitative data, as opposed to quantitative data in that regard. And for the most part, what I wanted to see was whether I thought I could meaningfully contribute, rather than whether or not I could fix anything. It does not look to me at all as if the board needs fixing. It needs to function as a board, and it needs a new member. And my primary purpose was not so much to try to learn the role of a board member before I became a board member, as to determine whether or not it was something I should apply for.
Andy?
So you've mentioned several times the inclusiveness of education, and, you know, in one of our recent board meetings, there was a discussion about how, and Counselor Boyd referred to this, where we have sort of four levels of education, the high school is going to be shrunk down to three, where you take the, what was the college prep and the standard, and sort of putting into a comprehensive level there. One of the things that came out of that was a proposed linkage between that change and then the honors program, you know, the stuff, and we still haven't discussed that at the table. But what it brought to light was almost a, you're teaching to the inclusion, but what you're leaving out are the kids that need to be challenged, that need to be really pushed and for excellence. So, because many times, because Merrimack has such a high regard in special ed, sometimes people believe we spend all our effort on teaching to the middle or inclusive that way. How do you see that alongside of challenging and really pushing the kids that are at the end of the spectrum, I mean, the higher end, that really need to be challenged?
The article that I, well, I appear as the last author, but honestly, the work was not mine. What I brought was the knowledge of how to publish in the academic sphere, but the article that I co-published with individuals from JMES was on their diamond model. And the reason why I thought that they should publish it was that they did a wonderful job of answering exactly that question. They took what is a triangle model, which works from the area of greatest need to a child who is typically developing or so-called average, and they mirrored it over so that children who are gifted have the same sense of them needing levels of supports that support the areas where they need to be challenged. And so when I talk about inclusive education, I see that as holistic. It's not specifically support for children who are identified, or not yet identified with special needs, but rather that it's an environment that supports students to both ends. When I teach at the university level, I include gifted, which is a term I don't like, but is a category, as, within the classes for special ed, even though it's not included at the federal level in legislation under IDA as an area, because it is as much an exceptionality as any other, and with as many advantages and challenges as any other exceptionality has.
You want me to take it, or you want me, okay. The same second question that I asked, which is, describe your definition of a quality public education.
Okay, a quality public education has two parts to it. One is when the children are in school, and one is after they graduate. When they're in school, they need to be engaged and happy, and when they graduate, they need to have the skills to be successful adults. Onto that, one can tack various pieces that vary based on the community, as to what character and skills are, fill those needs, and that changes based on time and place. But a quality education is one that prepares children for adult life, as defined by the adults around them, and does so in a way that allows them to enjoy their childhood as they move through school.
Michael?
Thank you. So it intrigues me with your background, it's very accomplished, I would have to say, very impressive, thank you. What I find interesting is, as we look at the board, we have four individuals that are more in the business world, I would say, versus the education. How do you think that would benefit the board if you were to be chosen in balancing the board a little?
I think that your question indicates the balance. I think that boards have a tendency to draw from, well, let me back up. I inhabit a strange world within education as well, and that is, I'm not a teacher. I was, but I'm not a practicing teacher. I engage with the school district in certain ways, but they're tangential. It's not as if I'm in there every day talking to principals and having roles that might be conflicting with a board role. And so I'm not fully part of that world. But on the other hand, I'm deeply immersed in public education and its policy and its purposes, both within my own perspective and at the state and national level. And so I hope that it would help balance the tendency for school boards to draw from individuals who learn about education on the school board, and learn about education from the perspective of an outsider, as opposed to somebody who's also been from within it. That perspective is invaluable. The school board exists in order to balance individuals who are educators. So one would not want a school board that was all me, or replicas of me. But at the same time, the ability to bring that voice, I think, might be an interesting, an interesting difference.
Thank you.
I don't have any further questions.
Thank you. Andy?
So you mentioned that you've been involved with, with teachers in the district in terms of publishing and stuff. If you became a member of the board, how would you change that behavior? Would you see your acting on behalf of teachers to publish things conflict with being a member of a school board?
The interactions that I've had with teachers are personal rather than professional in an odd way. I saw an opportunity to work with them and to use the fact that I knew how to publish to do something. I did that as myself, as opposed to representing some larger body. I would probably continue to interact with teachers I know, friends, colleagues, individuals, who now and then I might have a student at Riviera who was student teaching at Merrimack. I would probably, at that point, ask and be granted that I not supervise them. I don't know that that would be appropriate, but they might be in my classes, those pieces. I don't think I have any roles that would need tempering at the moment. I might have to be careful not to assume any, but that would be for the future.
I also don't have any more questions. Michael, do you have any more questions?
I've got one last one. So you've been in the community for eight years. Looking back on those eight years, what would you say is the most memorable thing that you've either seen come out of the school board itself, not maybe, maybe the administration, but the school board, that you might be able to recall?
It's not a specific incident, although I can go back to that if you really want me to answer it. I don't know if it feels this way from within, but from an outside view looking in, it is a surprisingly functional body. Things do get done. That doesn't mean that there aren't pauses, hiccups, times that are very rough, times when there are arguments in those pieces. But in other communities that I've lived along the way, you can have deadlock that absolutely stifles the school system for years, if not longer. And the individuals who have served here over the time that I've been here, and the folks who are involved at the school district level, seem to have the knack for figuring something out in the end, that that will work, and I admire that very much.
Thank you. Any other questions at this point? I feel like there's one on the tip of your tongue, Andy.
It's, I'm going to ask it anyway, because it's intrigued me as a board member, and I'm throwing it out to you, because you, you come from sort of an education sort of background. So you've heard us talk, and if you followed us, know that for the most part, parents are relatively happy with the education that Merrimack's provided, whether it's special ed, whether it's graduation rate, overall quality, people are coming into town. The problem is, is that when some of these big journals, like US News and World Report or other things, come out with rankings in the state, Merrimack is usually mid-pack, I'll say. There, you know, you always get compared to things like Bedford and, and Hollis Brookline and other towns around us, that financially, people tend to see that we're associated with. But those of us that know and pull the onion layers back a little bit, understand that it's more than, the ranking takes a lot of different dimensions in, and there's a lot of variables to it. How would you respond to, if you're on the board, how would you respond to a voter that said, "I'm paying the seventy-two million dollars a year to you guys, but yet you're only giving me fifty-seventh out of a hundred in terms of ranking of the high school"? How do you respond to something like that?
I would be curious to see where that particular individual feels that there's a need for improvement. Very, very often, when you have big data sets, large data, it's surprisingly manipulable. Data is only as good as the, as its gathering techniques, it's only as good as the people who interpret it, and it can certainly be used in interesting ways. When there's data that shows that somebody, somebody's using that to say they're dissatisfied with the school district, my interest would not be so much in challenging their sense of the data, but asking, why are they questioning performance? They're using this to say we're not doing well, why? What is it they're not happy with? And to proceed from that point. It's part of a broader perspective in general. I find that very, very often, when people complain about large issues, especially about other people, they're concerned about something to do with themselves or their loved ones. And if you find out what that concern is, it's much more productive than arguing with them about the point they use to bring that forward. So without dismissing data, because I find, as I said, I find data to be incredibly important, but as somebody who works with data, I'm also aware of the ways in which it can be misused. And I think that at that point, it would be a question for introspection, and to see if there was, if he was right, that there was something we could be doing better, or whether it's just another ranking.
Are there any other questions from the board? Now it's your turn to flip it on us. So item number three is, we've completed our questions, we're going to ask if you have questions of the board and administration.
Oh, I have questions. Okay. I would love to know, if you're willing to share, why you first joined a school board, and what you found to be the most interesting, challenging, important parts of that.
Start from left, yeah. Start from left again, I did last time.
Very interesting question, thank you. So my history comes from when I first moved to Merrimack back thirteen years ago. I had moved in in August, and I think our tax bill came out shortly after that, and my tax bill was about thirty-five percent higher than what it was on my bill that I had purchased the property at. So instead of sitting back and complaining about my tax bill or just anything like that, I ran for school board. I mean, not school board, for a budget committee, there we go, sorry. I'm on the school board now. I was on the budget committee, and I was on there for a couple of years, and due to family matters and just having young kids, it wasn't beneficial for me to be, continue on the budget committee, because my time needed to be committed more to my family at the time. Since then, I've worked with the NYA as a, as a coach for several years, because my son's been in it. I've always wanted to be back into, involved, to be part of the solution within the community. I think most of the people here on the board knew that, and the opportunity came up for me to run for the school board, my, my family said yes, and I decided to run for the school board again, so.
Now, I, I believe in being involved, an involved citizen. It's been kind of something to my core that goes back since my early, before I was even an adult, probably going back to high school. I would volunteer in various places throughout the years, anything from nursing homes to, I volunteered at the Children's Hospital in Chicago for quite a few years, and helped bring supplies to children that would help them cope with being hospitalized. After I moved out east, and I wasn't as involved as I would have liked to have been for a few years, and I had two children, and one was, they were both young, just entering their early elementary years, so I was grappling with where I could get involved and where I could make a difference. I wasn't sure if I would go to the school locally, the PFA. One of my neighbors encouraged me to get involved in the budget committee. So that's what I did, I got involved with the school district budget committee, and learned a lot, met a lot of people, met a lot of people at the schools. I, I can relate to the daunting idea of actually running for school board, but once I had three years under my belt of being on the budget committee, and watching a number of school board meetings, I felt like that was the next step for me in how I would get back to the community. So thanks for asking that question.
Thank you.
So for me, the short answer is, I didn't want to have to buy a new TV set. So here's the long answer, is, is, so I'm, I grew up in Merrimack, moved from like, when I was like eleven, moved in the mid-sixties, and been all the way through Merrimack schools, essentially lived here that whole adult life. And we have three, three boys, two of which are grown and on their own, one just graduated from Merrimack about a year and a half ago. And I never really got involved in town, you know, things were going okay, yeah, there were bumps in the road. But in the mid-two thousands, about ten, eleven, twelve years ago, this town was going through a little bit of a revolution in terms of budgeting stuff. And I found myself getting angrier and angrier at things that I was hearing, that, things that were said about schools and things like that. So I started throwing things at the TV, and then my wife says, "You're either going to stop or whatever." And it was about that time, and I mentioned early on, is that when we switched to a town council form of government, it changed the purpose of the budget committee, to go from a joint municipal school one to a school only, and it had to be restaffed all from scratch. So there was almost a brand-new election to restaff a twelve-member board. So I said, "Well, you know, there were several of us that were sort of like-minded in the community that wanted to get involved, so we sort of came in in the mid," and so I got involved in the budget committee first, and served on that for five years. And then the opportunity was there where I could sort of go to the next level to be on the school board, and because when you're on the budget committee, you touch budgets, but you don't really have the ability to influence what causes the budgets, or what's done with the budget once you're done. You sort of, you sort of visit it for a short period of time, you get to yea and nay. And one of the reasons, and one of the events that brought me to saying that I wanted to be on the school board, is that there was a period where there was a proposal to cut an entire team from the middle school. And for whatever reason, it wasn't understood by the voters during the school board's deliberations that this was going to be happening. So when it got done, and they approved a budget that removed that, that four-member team, it then came to the hands of the, the budget committee. And anybody that goes to a budget committee meeting knows, you very rarely get people attending. Well, we were having hundreds of people attend the budget committee meetings, because they were upset about the decision to cut the thing, so, cut the team. So it's hard to do anything with, from a budget committee perspective on that, because it's policy-driven, it's decision-driven. So that is what convinced me that when my term was up with the, with the budget committee, I wanted to run for school board, because I wanted to be involved in sort of the next level, to help set the policy, set the decisions, and then drive the budget. Because the budget is what got me into this, you know, and, and my love of Merrimack having grown here was part of it, you know, so, so that's really what drove me into getting involved, so.
And for me, for the school board specifically, I was raised by an educator, my dad was a teacher. He actually taught in a prison, because the public school system was too frustrating for him. So, cover your ears, Mark, you're not going to like this. He always used to raise me, saying, "I don't know why there's all this administration, the teachers should just be able to teach, and everything will be fine." And so, needless to say, you know, he, he, I was like, well, then what does go into a public education? You know, we, we have two kids in the district, and I'm like, you know, you can armchair quarterback it, or you can get in the game and say, "What can I do to, to help things? What can I do to, you know, get involved in?" And the biggest thing we did, I think, I've done over the last seven years, is learn the business of education, and how you can't just let teachers teach, but know that teachers are teaching collaboratively, so that a student can grow. So if my dad was alive today, it's sitting down and have a little talk with him about how he's been wrong his entire life about, about that. It's definitely more of a collaborative environment. For us, it was, my husband and I were- environment. For us, it was, my husband and I were both involved. I was on the planning and building committee before I was here. I'm the only one at this table that was not on the budget committee. Because my husband's on the budget committee and we don't hang out politically together.
Or I'm on a pay-to-watch.
Everyone wanted me to, just so we could sit at the same table and bark at each other. But honestly, when it comes to the school board, it's about making sure that I did whatever I could do to help our community have a quality public education. And the business of it is, I think, you know, the marketing, the communications. And my, I've also have a background in HR. So, those, those two complements, I think, bring qualities to the school board at the time that might have been unique. And so, I use that as my opportunity to, to, you know, make a difference. And I've really enjoyed my seven years. And I think I've learned more than, than I've, I've taught as far as, as far as this has gone. So, you know, it's, it's very rewarding, I will say, to anyone who asks, it's very rewarding. You know, you do, you know, take your lumps and there's not always going to be people that, you never are going to please 100% of the people 100% of the time, but the, the one thing you have to do is have an open ear. And, you know, for anyone, and Bill knows this as well, is you need to represent everyone, whether they voted for you or not. So, you know, making sure that you keep an open mind and an open eye to that. So, that's why I did it, but, and that's why I still do it, because I really enjoy it.
Thank you. And the skillset that you think you brought that most came into play for you when you, as on the board as opposed to other parts of your life?
I'm fairly new to the board, so I'm still trying to figure out the skillset that I'm going to, breathing. What I'm hoping to do is, it's not so much a skillset, but I always like to question, I like to review. And even though if something might have been decided, I like to still go back to it and see if there's another perspective to be, be seen. I think that one of the areas that I, I want to hopefully help the school with that I think it needs to be done is communication within the community. I think that I work within the website and content management world. So, I feel that looking at the website, I think that there's an area to be improved on, I think. So, that's hopefully an area that I'll be able to assist with. But at this point, I think it's, you know, just new eyes and hopefully a, a different view or a different set of eyes looking at the same thing.
Nice, thank you.
I think I brought, the skillset that I brought, I guess is twofold. One would be the time that I spent on the budget committee. I learned a lot about it, but I also have a strong background in being able to review data, review financials. But I also have a strong ability to work with people, to engage people, and to collaborate for important goals and for, you know, things that need to get done. So, I think that I brought, I brought that, those things with me.
Thank you.
So, for me, it's sort of twofold, but they're related. So, my, my background is, is I'm in the high-tech industry, been 37 years this year now. So, I understand technology. My wife is from the technology space. She, she actually got a master's from Riviera two years ago with tech, masters in technology education, technology integration and, and education. So, technology involved in education is really important in our whole family, you know, and how you use it and how you carry it and things like that. But the other thing, the other, so I bring that background to the table, but the skill I bring to the tables is I, I learned to work at Digital Equipment Corporation, which was very big here, you know, years ago. And it was, digital was a unique in the industry is that it was a very collaborative-based business. Where if you look at technology today, collaboration's not the first thing you think of when you think of it. It's very cutthroat, very aggressive, A-type personalities and things like that. Digital's model was, even though you'd never achieve consensus, you would strive to achieve it so that people would at least understand why you made the decision that you did. So, my, people that have worked with me at the table know that I try to hear all sides. I will make a decision. I mean, I've been known in the past when I first was on the board to, the first thing I learned is you never abstain from a vote because people expect you to take a position. Even if you're truly mixed, you need to sort of take a side unless you've got a conflict of interest, so to speak. But for me, it's, you have to come and see all the sides and then make a decision, but be able to look somebody in the face, you know, the next vote and agree with them when you might be ready to rip their throat out one, the next thing you want to embrace them, you know. So, that's where you're at.
You meant to rip your throat out this way and embrace that.
I noticed that.
Stuck with the same person for continuity, right? So, but anyway, that's, that's sort of what I am. I try to build consensus, that's the other skill that I bring, so.
Thank you.
I clearly bring a sense of humor. Honestly, I think the, the skillset, and by the way, explains everything, Andy. You just summarized everything in that, the digital example. Now I understand you better. But for me, it's, yeah, the HR has really come in handy. It's what I did my graduate work in, but I professionally have always done marketing in the cable industry and some high-tech as well. But it's really when you talk about things like the contracts and you talk about what goes into running a school district, people are the backbone of it. So, the HR part has been very handy. As far as, you know, communications and marketing, you know, we, it helps us to identify where we can improve. We're not there. I think we all want to do better at communication. I think we have a commitment as a, as a board. And we actually, as of this year, have a communication liaison assignment. So, we're going to start to work on communications. Both Cindy and Michael are involved. Cindy from what I would call the tactical perspective and Michael from the technological. So, we can start working more toward having what I would call facilitated avenues for communication for our, our parents, students, and constituents. So, that's something that we committed to as a board and that's why it's a new committee assignment, so.
That's pretty awesome.
So, we are looking forward to seeing that take off and, and do great things. So, that, that would be my answer.
Thank you. Is there time for one more question?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Clark?
Prior experience, where do you see its importance in a board member? In that, I mean, I bring all kinds of professional experience, but certainly not experience within local government. And so, where do you see that falling in relation to your needs?
That's an interesting one. I mean, for, for me, my prior experience is obviously having been on, on the board for the budget committee, stuff in college. But I think it's more just having an open mind, you know, wanting to be committed to the community. I think that's more important, to have that, that love of your community and wanting to see it to get, be better as a whole. Obviously, what's great is that each individual has a different view of what better, what, how the community can be better. And that's how the community doesn't get better. It's not just one individual view. And I think it's being able to, like Andy said, come to a consensus of moving stuff forward even though it might not be exactly in the same direction that you want it to go. So, I, I would just say that my, I think my, my experience of just wanting to be involved in the community, also having my family in the community and wanting to have the best community for my family is probably the most important.
Right, thanks.
And I think that if you're running for president of the United States, all of that prior experience is extremely important. But I think that in a school board body, I think that there's a lot of things that can be brought to the table because I, I think that a school board in particular is more grassroots from the community, representatives from the community. The prior experience for me, the budget committee, which was an elected position, was what made me say, "Hey, you know, now I think I'm ready to take a deeper dive." But that I don't view from here as a critical piece of experience.
Thank you.
So, I took your question a little different than you guys, but that's okay. I'm just going to do it anyway. So, if I, if, if I, if I look at your skills that you bring to the table here, it's a, you've got a bit of a double-edged sword, but it's not a bad thing. You don't have the background of how things tick in the school district. You, you haven't looked at budgets closely like the rest of us likely in this room have. Or the politics or policies or whatever that's behind it. But at the same, but at the same time, it's not, not rocket science. It, it is difficult to learn, but if you're a person that's used to research and can do data and analytics and things like that, you can pick it up. You, you have, it's, you gotta be proactive, you gotta ask questions, you gotta want to be involved to do that kind of stuff to learn the budget. But at the same time, you're also bringing a fresh perspective, a fresh set of eyes. I mean, you're going to ask the dumb questions, you're going to ask the smart questions. And those handful of smart questions are the things that we many times don't think of, or maybe we asked them three, four years ago that maybe need to be asked again. Things may not be the same as they were. I mean, every, it's a very fluid environment. So, I see your perspective bringing is that you don't have the historical background, but you have the unique position that you're potentially maybe not biased to, to a particular way that we've done something in the past. So, it's, so, if you take that, what skill you bring, what's good and bad, that's sort of the way I would look at, at somebody like you coming in, not having been involved before, but understanding the business. You understand what education's about, you understand that there's infrastructure costs to pay the teachers, to pay for infrastructure and things like that. So, those are all the budget battles that we fight with a fixed amount of dollars that sometimes you have to work with that's less, so.
Thank you, that makes sense.
And I would look at orientation. I think orientation is basically building up skillsets and we have an orientation whenever we have a new board member. So, whoever's chosen, there is going to be an orientation. And what we do is we look at what do you know, what don't, how do, how do we do business? How does the school district and the school board do business? And that's unique to anyone coming on. So, there's learning from day one. And not having prior experience in public political life has pros and cons. I think there, when it comes to orientation, there are things as far as we're used to constituents stopping us in Market Basket and talking to us about the vote we had last night. That's, you know, that truly is, shaws, or shaws, because it's a real bunch of claws. But I find them everywhere. So, they're all, they're all over the place, our constituents. But, you know, all that being said, just, you know, getting you ready to, to be an effective board member. And regardless of who's chosen or who was elected, that's always a process that's got to take place. And based on the things you might not be expecting, that's what we prepare you to do. And then we give you a book this big of all our policies and you get to read that in your free time, too. So, that's fun.
It's online, though.
It's online, too, yes. But take, take the fun away. But I got a book this big, literally when I got on the board, like, oh, seven years ago. It was all paper, making sure I had it. Oh, good for you. You must have been the cutoff. But, but there was, you know, a good orientation for us. So, you know, before you even walk into your first meeting, whoever's selected, you're going to know how we do business. You know, and it's, you know, a lot of what you see on TV, it really is. So, not that I watch myself on TV because I don't. But, you know, it's just, and then, you know, refining. I think you, you refine the art of, of being a board member as you, as you go on as well. And as things come up as a board, we're dealing, in the three months since the election, I think we've dealt with more stuff we've never dealt with in our lives. Water, air, soil, resignations. I mean, we have never done any of this. I'm sorry, with, oh, pipelines. We've done pipelines. None of this is, like, in the last 12 months, this is all new territory for us. So, what you have to do is, pardon, do your homework. You know, as a teacher, you probably know a lot about that. And, you know, do your homework and be ready to, be ready to get your hands dirty and get it done. So, you know, whatever you need to get that done, you know, the, the board and the district are always here to support. So, regardless, that's, that's our job as a, as a collective.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's it for me.
Okay, nothing for administration? You're good?
I can ask the same, I would like to. I didn't know whether it was mayor.
Of course, yeah, administration's on the table. That's why I brought him, for fun.
Same questions, but switched around in the other direction. What is it that you most hope will help to balance the board this time? And what are the skills that you think are most, most important to fill that?
So, I've also worked in a number of different districts in varying roles and I've had the chance to observe how these bodies work. And it's been an absolute truism for me since I've been here that this board and all its various members over the, over the years has truly been a, a very open-minded group of folks. And in this business, education, I think if ever there's, you know, a need for people to have an open mind and inquisitive orientation to doing things, it would be education. And so, I've always appreciated that about all the boards that I've worked with. And this board is, is very much the same. So, I don't ever personally look, I mean, I think that the superintendent and I really work very hard to work with everyone. So, I don't look for a particular skillset. I just always hope that we maintain an opportunity in this district to be able to really dialogue well and, and openly and, and just keep that flowing. That's what works best for students, in my opinion, always, 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 always. So, broadly, that's what I would look for.
Thank you.
Sure.
And the floor is still yours because at this point, if there's anything you wanted to share with us, closing statements, as they say at all good debates. So, if there's anything you wanted us to know that maybe hadn't been covered tonight, this is your time to do it.
I think we've covered quite a bit. I wanted to thank you, though, not just for hearing me, but for everything that you do. And I hope very much, and I'm sure that you will find somebody who does a wonderful job for you, whoever you choose.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you both for a great, a great night of Q and A and, and giving us a lot to think about and a lot to deliberate on. At this point, we will be deliberating, again, live because it is a public forum. And we will be looking to elect a position as we sit here. So, behind us is our school district clerk, Pat Heinrich. And upon a majority vote, she'll be ready to swear the new member in. And then we'll get you a new email by morning. So, not that I'm trying to be efficient or anything. So, that being said, we will close interviews and open up deliberations. Does anyone have questions or comments based upon the discussions we've had tonight? Okay, I think it was Michael and Andy, Andy to Michael, who, why not?
I just wanted to say thank you very much to both of you for coming and putting your hat in the ring. Definitely appreciate it and appreciate everything that you've discussed with us tonight. And thank you very much.
Andy?
Well, I'd like to echo Michael. Have, having two people that are, that want to be involved, that want to, want to make a difference, that want to help this, this August board move forward through the next nine or 10 months or whatever it is it is, it's, it's great to see that, that people want to be involved because it's, it's not easy. It's not an easy job to do because one of the things that I learned is that no matter what position you take, somebody's very upset at you. People, you get one group that's happy, one group's upset. The only thing that you can hope is that you're transparent in what you do so people at least know why you did what you did. As far as the candidates are concerned, I mean, two people that, that care a lot about what happens, that are so coming at it from different angles, makes it really hard to, to compare when we start to discuss. Because on one hand, you get somebody that knows the rope, that gets involved, that cares about the town through, you know, through his history of serving, you know, that, that we, most of us have known and worked with, to somebody who's first-timer afraid to, was afraid to get involved, but, but stuck her nose in there to want to get involved and, and comes from an area where education has, has driven her, her career and her interest and her life. And basically, she gets involved. It's two qualities that we need to have. So, if, we can't expand the board to six people, you know, to.
We'd be the same.
We'd be the same predicament as the four, so we can't do that. So, the challenge between, before the board here is going to be how we choose one and hope that who, and my personal belief is, or hope is that whoever we choose, we don't choose, wants to be involved sometime. Because when we look at the election next April, we're going to have, we're going to have two positions, you know, Cindy, depending on what, what she decides, but also this position is going to be up for election in April for one year. So, so this, this isn't just a, it isn't for, for nine to 10 months, but it's also another opportunity in April. So, I just wanted to sort of summarize my view of the way things went so far tonight.
And, you know, I would say ditto absolutely to the first two, especially Andy, I think when you came from it. We have two very diverse, but very qualified candidates for this position. That being said, we do have openings on the, the budget committee still. We did have, so for whoever is not selected, there's still opportunity to serve the district in a very meaningful capacity. So, you know, that to be considered. And by the way, Pat Heinrich is also the scribe for the, for the budget committee and can give you more information if, if you had any questions. And she's just so handy tonight for us. So, thank you. And a killer crochet person if, if the cameras aren't on her. She's very good. So, that being said, is there any comments or questions or is there a motion? Cindy?
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Dr. Naomi Schoenfeld to the position. I believe, as what everyone said, that both candidates are, what?
Do you want a second first?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And then discussion motion? Do I have a second?
Sitting tired.
Okay. A second by Michael? Now you can speak to your motion, Cindy. We're good.
I echo what everyone has said, that it's, there's a couple of, two candidates that are outstanding and want to give to this community. What I What I find refreshing is that it's someone, a fresh set of eyes with kind of a different background than a lot of us at this table, that can maybe provide, that will provide different perspective, if appointed, than what we have. So, I think that, you know, that, so.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Michael?
I'd like to support that motion. This actually is a tough decision, because I have known Bill for quite some time, and I respect him very much. And I thoroughly enjoy our discussions that are actually, come from different angles many times. But I think that, I think that the angle that Dr. Schoenfeld will bring to the Board is a little different, a little different view. I think it's a balance beyond to the business side. I know that she's not directly a teacher, but I think that would be, bring a good view to the discussions. Also, do like to have somebody else come into the fold of the community and presenting or representing the community, so, yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Cindy?
There was just one more comment that I wanted to add. I just, I just had a little bit of concern regarding the serving on both Boards of the town. It's, I know there's not a bylaw or anything against it, but it just sits a little different to me that it's, and so when there's someone that's willing to serve on one, not both, that I think that that could be important, too, but it, for one example of that would be, let's say we had a committee that Mr. Boyd, if appointed, were serving on, where would that person be representing? You know, would they be a dual representation of-
You mean like Parks and Rec, where we have a School Board and a Town Council?
What if we hadn't, and it didn't sound like-
Safeguard does, too.
Yeah, it didn't sound like, at least at this point in time, were you in the Planning and Building, or is it?
No, he was in the Planning Board.
The Planning Board.
ECAC, which is the Economic Development.
Yeah. And so, and maybe some unforeseen things like that. So, I did want to put that on the table, that that played into my decision-making.
Andy?
This was really hard, because when we got through both of the interviews, talking to Bill and Naomi, it was really hard. I mean, I purely, I truly wanted two open positions on the Board, but I can't, I don't have that luxury, so my-
Don't look at me that hard.
No. But, so as a result, my consensus-building skills aren't going to be able, and I'm going to have to take a position here. One of the things that, you know, I share a little bit of Shannon, you're not Shannon, you're Cindy's concerns, about the dual Board position, because I know that we, you talked through a couple scenarios that I completely agree could, the approach you would handle. But you did talk about liaison improvement between the Boards, and I would, you're going to get 1,000% agreement with me, is I think there needs to be a tighter relationship between the Boards, but my concern is if it's a voted-on member that's acting as the liaison in between them, it's not really a liaison at that point, it's sort of a dual role. And what I would propose, in a perfect world, is that the two Boards work together to figure out how we could formally liaise in a, sort of a bidirectional sort of role, because I think it's hugely important. I think we've got a good relationship going now, and I don't want to lose it. I want us to be able to leverage future things, because you did bring up stuff like the skate park and the things that are going to be, things that I know that we on the Board have shared positions on that are going to come to the Town Council that we'll need to work over the next few years. So, from that perspective, you know, and Dr. Schoenfeld's background is, she's going to have her hands full. If we, if we pull her in for the next 10 months, she's going to have a lot to learn about the budget process, how we click, you know, doing the meetings and helping to make some of the decisions and listening, especially in educational stuff, I think you'll fall into that fairly easy. But the budget stuff, it's hard. I mean, Shannon talked about a book that was this high. Well, that is our budget book. I don't know if you've ever seen Budget Meetings, where we walk in, but it's a huge book, you can get it electronically, but where we break every department, every school, every department down into budget items and things like that, it's a daunting task, it takes us quite a while to do it. So, somebody that's willing to come in, that knows us in front and hasn't run out the door after the discussion, is positive. So, at this point in time, given the trade-off I'd have to make, I mean, my current mindset is to sort of, sort of agree with Cindy and Michael in terms of the motion that's on the floor, so.
They did promise to have a position and a vote on things, so therefore, I know, exactly. My position is, I think we already have a lot of business background, we don't have education. Something that we talked about at the Board a few months ago is that we are in an infantile stage for our Mental Health Committee, which is a district-wide initiative, and it was never even considered, based upon our backgrounds, to have someone on the Board that could be a School Board rep for that. That would be something I would even recommend if, you know, if Dr. Schoenfeld was put in place. And so, for that reason, I think that there's opportunity that we can leverage here. You know, we can teach her the rest, and she can teach us as well, which is, you know, when it comes to a School Board position, such a unique position to be in. When it comes to Bill's candidacy, obviously you know, we know your capabilities. We've known you for a long, a lot of us, I think all of us have known you for a very long time, and that's why, you know, I brought up that Budget Committee, was if it was Dr. Schoenfeld that wasn't selected, then she could learn the part that she really didn't understand from a Merrimack point of view and from Bill's perspective. He can bring back his knowledge and what he knows is going on in the town with things like capital projects and infuse that in, but without it being a governing role. So, I think that there's a lot of benefit for whoever doesn't get chosen to have that, you know, maybe consider that for themselves, which, you know, it's up to you, but I think it's a great idea. So, that being said, I am also in support of the motion, but I do so knowing that we are not gaining other skill sets, because you can't have both. So, when it comes to the insurance industry, I think that has been very valuable for us, especially negotiations, and we're going to have to do our homework on that, where we had someone on the inside of the industry that understood things like claims and all of that, that we're going to have, we're going to have to do a little more work on our end. So, we've always been very lucky that way. And so, we have to trade off a skill set, but I think we're, you know, with Dr. Schoenfeld, we're going to gain a few skills that we would never have had the opportunity to have before now, so I'm in support of the motion. Andy?
Just, I want to chime in just a little bit here, is I agree that the insurance perspective is important, but I'd also like to remind us that we're in the oddball year where we don't have a contract to negotiate. So, for the next eight, nine to 10 months, it's not critical that we have a role with insurance knowledge, because in theory, unless we're going to talk about a healthcare change, which we're not, so, but that being said, if we look at the following year, when we go into, we head into a support staff contract and advise and confer, so that's something to keep in mind, you know, should, should somebody want to be able to run during that timeframe, so.
So, are there any other comments before we go to a vote? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none? The motion carries 4-0-0. We will take a moment to sign the manifest. We thank you and good night.